Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, please call the room.
Trustee Bell. Trustee Grant. Trustee Williams. Trustee Bell. Trustee Brewer. Yes. Trustee Grant. Trustee Williams. Yes. Trustee Bell. Yes.
Motion carried. Item number two, motion to recess into executive session.
So, moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Brewer. Any questions? Trustee, uh, trustee Brewer. We're trying, we're taking home call, not by law.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. I just forgot to reiterate that this is going to be for personnel matters only, is what I was told. So, we will be back out. Now, I'll accept the motion to reconvene.
So move.
Move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Brewer. Madam clerk, please call the room.
Trustee Grant. Trustee Grant. Trustee Ty. Trustee Williams? Here. Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Brewer?
Here. Motion is carried. Item number four, I'll accept the motion to approve the general proceedings of the committee meeting October 1st, 2019.
I take a motion that we approve those minutes with corrections that I submitted to the board.
So, moved by trustee Bell, I'm sorry, moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Bell. Any questions?
Uh, it's my understanding that trustee Williams has made some corrections, so, um, is anybody receiving the band or what corrections do you want on hand or remain?
I sent you on the first one, you have your shirt.
That's right, yeah, okay, so.
Second.
Oh.
On the second page of the minutes of October 1st, trustee Williams suggested an ordinance and resolution, I'm sorry, let me get my mic, trustee Williams suggested an ordinance and resolution to change the meeting schedule as it would say 2,000 annually, that's actually 18,000 annually, because it's $750 per meeting if we cut the meetings in half. So, that was the first correction. And on the third page, trustee Grant recalled the proposed budget was over 775,000, it should say the budget was over by 775,000. Yeah, it just said the budget is over by that much, not that the budget was oversome. And on the last page, it's, um, under the discussion with Judy Cast as a, um, public comment, the second to the last comment should be deleted.
Um, at first, I just watched my attention, that your agenda, that your operations tonight, that you guys, as, um, December the 7th, they implied that the review period needed the action to be taken, so very, 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 very,[356.33]
That's it. Got you. As far as the tree dying and limbs falling, I'm sorry to hear that part of it. We're trying to get around to trim and prune the trees and cut the ones that are dead down. That's the process we've been, we've got something like four hundred trees that take care of. Hope we get to that one soon. It's that time of year that we start doing that because it's cold outside, so that's when we can try to, unless we have water main bring. So that's something that the people that are involved in that hurt, and I'm sure they'll address that issue. So glad you brought that up. We do have people that, like I said before, heard that, and I'm sure they'll put it on their radar. As far as the marquee not being changed, there was the, you're saying the only thing that's on there is the meet with the mayor. Well, still up there now about the Santa Claus parade, and that's the last thing that was done. We try to change the marquee as often as we need to, but there are other events. If it's a village-related event, then yes, we will have it changed. If it's not a village-related event, then why naturally to be there? But I'm sorry that you feel that it's only for me, but it's not. But I'm sorry you feel that way, but.
The use of the marquee is changed. Sometimes it may not happen. That could be because of.
That could be because of not having a person at the right time to do it, or we've had an emergency and where we couldn't get a chance to change the marquee. Especially at this time when we get a lot of breaks, a lot of things that are going on in the village, we put those, make those our priorities, not the marquee. But in the future, we'll be, we will be cognizant of that particular advice that you just gave out, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that you are looking at the marquee. A lot of people don't even look at the marquee, so I'm glad you're looking at the marquee. And that being said, we're going to try to do our best to keep it updated as much as possible. That being said, reports of officers, with the mayor's report. I attended a meeting with our legislators this past week. There's two things that I got out of this meeting, and one of them is a positive for the village. Another one is something that I kind of knew, but I've never experienced. I was not mayor at the time, the last time it happened. So the first thing is that was, it was talked about, and this is our congresswoman and then our state legislators. We're at this meeting, and they discussed the airport, the third airport. And they're trying to push it. It will be a win-win for the South suburbs, South region, because we're naturally, we're on the path to that. But it seems like Springfield is not as gung-ho as we feel that they should be to help bring the airport in. And so that being said, things are not moving as smoothly, even though this third airport has been talked about since, oh heck, I forgot the year, but it was back when Jesse Jackson was congressman at that time. So that's been that long and before. So I think at one time, our own mayor, at the time, he wasn't mayor anymore, but he was part of this, and that was Ed Paisel. So that's how far it goes back, and it's still, they're still, just still waiting on it. But this is a priority that this congressman wants to have so it can bring economic development in the South region, and right now it seems that they're running through, you know, a lot of red tape. The second item, more dear to this village, and that's the capital program funding. We were awarded $957,000 from the state to help the freight costs of different things that we need, infrastructure, fire hydrants, things of that nature that the, that we applied for, and we were awarded that amount of money. Now, I asked, okay, fine, this was back in June that they talked about it, and I understand now what they're saying is they're waiting on bonds to be purchased so they can disperse the money. I was under the impression that the money was in the budget for the state, but now they have to flow bonds. So in the meantime, there's some things that I was hoping that we can get started right away, so I don't want to start something, pay for it out of the budget and not get reimbursed, and now whether we can make that shortfall up. So right now, there's some projects, but that being said, we still have monies that are coming in from different items and different things that we, that we get from the state. You got your MFT, you got your tax, your gasoline tax and things like that, which is another thing. The third thing I asked about, gasoline tax was doubled in our area. You know, when are we going to start seeing some of that money coming into the village too? So it was an informative meeting, a lot of questions asked about the money that's supposed to be promised into the South region, and I got a lot of rhetoric, but like I said before, I want to see when are we going to start getting some of this influx? It was promising. I don't like the fact that, and this is something that I found out, the last time they did a capital funding program was almost ten years ago, and they didn't, and they didn't get half the money that was promised to them. So, you know, so why, 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 why is that happening? That question was asked by a lot of mayors. It was about fifteen different mayors that were there, and they had basically the same questions, and, you know, why promise something and we can't get it? So, you know, I, I, you know, it's, it's more or less, you have to keep on them, but in the meantime, you know, don't promise the money. We're looking for doing some projects. We got some other projects coming up. Maggie from CMAP that's here with us twice a week, she's got some other funding that we're trying to get a hold of, so we can get some of this money, and we've got some programs that are going to be started to help fund some of the, the first funding for the sidewalk that's going to go from, I think it's from Cottage Grove all the way to Burnham Avenue and down 223rd Street. So the engineering phase of it has been okay, but until money's released, we're not going to even get that taken care of, because I still don't want to make a bill and then find out we don't have the funding, but we owe these people because we've asked them to do the work. So that's, so that's, that's something that, that we're looking at. That being said, that's all that I have. Madam clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to step aside from my original and discuss real quickly something that is very concerning, and that is what we just went through with the minutes. It is unconscionable that someone in the audience will see minutes before they've been presented to the board for approval. It is unconscionable that a resident will be shared the minutes before they were even approved. That is unacceptable. To hear it, doesn't matter what the reason, what the cause, know that. I'm going to invite each one of our dear lovely corporate authorities to come to my office and to listen to the recording, and if you don't want to be in my presence to listen to the recording, then go to YouTube. As you can see, it's being taped right now. It's there. Know that when you guys and our residents act ugly at these meetings, when it's time for me to record them, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, because what I go through when I listen to you guys in these meetings, and then what I have to listen to over and over again as I'm actually taking, doing the minutes, it's mind-boggling. Absolutely mind-boggling. The ugliness that comes out of some people's mouths, the disrespect, how disloyal you are, it makes no sense, and I promise you, you cannot ever count on me to make you look better than what you make yourselves, because sometimes you guys are very, very, very ugly. You know that our meetings get very volatile, you guys get very passionate, and sometimes you lose sight of what and how you are really supposed to conduct yourself in a business meeting. And I'm not going to sugarcoat it, as I said. So you can share what I put in that minute, what I put in minutes in advance to anybody you care for, but know that it's not going to change, because then they've had second thoughts on, ooh, maybe I shouldn't have said that, just like what happened a couple weeks ago with Judy Gaff. The same person, and you all, people got on her, and then she sort of backed down a little bit. We have to watch what we say if we don't want it in writing. Now, where these minutes are concerned, that you are tabled, they are going to be tabled for a while, and it's not a warning, it's not a threat, it is a promise. I asked one trustee, when he first got here, did you find anything wrong with the minutes? And he was like, oh, there was one thing, but I don't see it, it was minor. But then he turned around now and tabled two sets of minutes, agree? You guys got to start thinking for yourselves. The public elected you to represent them, and right now, the way you all just took that vote, you're not representing well, because you're not thinking for yourself. Let me move on and talk about some of the more positive things that's been going on in my world. I had the pleasure within the last two weeks to swear into office two firefighters, and I see so many of the firefighters here, and so therefore, I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder by saying any of their names, but know that whenever I have an opportunity to swear anyone into office, it is a great joy, and so I would definitely want to say that. I've helped and participated with Shop With The Cop. I'm not going to steal the police chief's thunder either. The Santa Parade, I'm not going to steal Lieutenant Myers, but we've been doing some wonderful, Chief, I'm sorry, forgive me, sir. He's the one that basically led that piece up, and the village has been doing some positive things. We really have, and it has to be acknowledged, and especially this past weekend, I know, because I was right there with most of you, and I'm still feeling it. I want to talk to you a little bit about holiday cheer, and I'm going to ask everyone that's within my voice that as you walk out the door, make certain that you grab one of the sheets that say holiday cheer that has the shopping list. I'm going to ask that you take that shopping list and go shopping with it, and then drop off those canned goods and those items, either here, the fire station, the police station, any of our schools, and/or any of your churches, because we do want to serve 100-plus people. Know that we've been very busy here in the office as well. We have been ratifying ordinances, agreements, resolutions, and all of that, and we're just basically on top of it, and you should, I would hope that you are appreciative of what our offices are doing on behalf of the village, because we are rocking and rolling. That completes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Village Administrator, Mr. Christopher Williams.
Evening, everyone. I'm, I'm just gonna just recap some things. To the mayor's point that was brought up earlier, we have been working diligently to collectively try to find some funds, and I definitely truly appreciate Ms. Jar and Robert's Engineering, as well as some of my senior staff members in this endeavor. We actually just had a training today for the street transportation project, so that might be able to offset some of the money that the state promised that we may get, and then there's also some other funding that we've been securing. I'm not going to recap everything on my report, but there's going to be a lot of stuff forthcoming at the next committee meeting, because one of the other things that I feel like, I feel, but this is just straight decision-making data, is that we do need to present some type of centralized database, and so I'm going to have a couple of vendors come in related to that very soon. And that's all I'm going to just chime in about. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, okay. Yeah.
You want?
Okay. Would you elaborate on the database that we were looking at, the ones that we're talking about? Yeah, I know that's something, that's a lot of fantastic database, and also, could you talk more on the upcoming session that we're going to have on December seventeen, seventeen for Kane McKenney? You know, I feel like I know what's going on with that, and also, with Kane McKenney, I see if I can have a difficult time trying to get some information from them related to the tip, so I was wondering if we actually get some documentation before they come in so we can follow along and, and, you know, and ask questions during that, you know, when they come into business with us.
Well, I'll answer your first question. I'll ask both of them, I did show some deference to the modification of the meeting schedule.
Anybody's voice?
Okay. Okay. To your first point about centralized database, so one of the things that I realized is that our decision-making has been a little compromised because of the fact that we have fragmented systems in here, in which we have data being captured from all over places. We have finance, we have public works, we got lease, fire, and then we have external stuff. So, and then also, you just kind of saw that play out with the budget process. So with that said, one of the things I've been doing is actually been having some demos done with different vendors as it relates to how we can have a system that talks to everyone, and we can actually make sure that data's imported and we have unlimited user licenses, that people can be able to access that data without compromising the data integrity. So that's very important. Again, it allows us to better make decision-making from resource allocation, personnel, staffing, monitoring of water, all this. I mean, this is some wonderful systems there. So with that said, I've had the pleasure of having a demo done, and some of the trustees, mayor, a couple of my senior department heads were able to come in and chime in about it, and that's one of them that I'm going to have presented at the January seventh meeting, I think that's the next committee meeting. And so I'm going to have to present, I beg the internal, I mean, interim finance director to find some money for me relating to it, because I think we can, and I think at the end of the day, it will produce better decision-making, also produce cost efficiency and operational efficiency, because we can better monitor stuff. We have to do it. I mean, it's just straight to the point. I can't deny it, and it's also moving us into that position of being a more efficient and a smart gov, because that's one of it. And then also, to the public as well, it'll also build in fields that they can request information as well, and actually customize the data request that they have, so it's also beneficial to the general public as well. So that's the goal, and that also leads to the desire to have a better communication system for everyone, external partners, constituents, department heads. If we can streamline all that, then that just puts us over leaps and bounds, and then also helps encourage our economic growth. Now, to the next point, Kane McKenney was going to come in on December seventeenth. From my understanding, the meeting has been modified, that we will have our meeting at the next committee meeting at June, I mean, January seventh, and from there, I will ensure that Kane McKenney does provide data beforehand. I know, as I stated before, that my talks with Kane McKenney is that they were waiting for some data to come that, to present there to finalize the report. So I know Mr. Finch probably can chime in a little bit more about that, but with that said, we can have more direct questions, because I did prepare him. I did say, Kane McKenney, like, look, you, when they come, they're going to hit the grill you with as many questions as possible, be prepared. However, if the corporate authorities do have more specific questions in advance, then I, we collectively make sure that those questions are submitted to them in advance, and they're thoroughly prepared, but they are waiting and excited. Okay, I threw out the excited part, but they're waiting to come and actually present, and that's all I have to say.
Question.
Yes.
So do we have, are we something to look at to implement this fiscal year or next fiscal year? And if so, do we have a few quotes so that we know how much this costs, or are we just going to?
You're talking about the smart gov, open data source that I was referencing? Well, first of all, I know who I'm dealing with here. So I know who I'm dealing with as it relates to the interim finance director, as well as corporate authorities. So the reason I haven't presented any financial quotes to you yet is because I've been haggling and say like, look, you all need to make something work. This is what I know I might be able to present, but I need you all to come down and see how we can stretch it out. So with that said, I understand that we have had some financial challenges, and for whatever reason we did, I did ask for them to start presenting some quotes as it relates to maybe initial payment and the remaining payments can be stretched out in the next fiscal year. And that's the same thing, I went back to the people I had interested in for our website development as well. So I'm looking at some creative financial ways to get it paid for, at least for initial installment, and then maybe stretch it along multiple fiscal years. So I wanted to draft a more detailed memo explaining that before they actually come and present to you all. So you'll, you'll have some Christmas reading.
You have a question? Okay, village attorney, Mr. Mike McGrath.
Thank you, Mayor, no report.
Okay, village engineer, Mr. Jim Zarneck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Piggybacking on Chris's earlier comments, we were pleased to meet with Chris and Maggie last week to discuss the South suburban mayor and manager association's STP program call for projects. This will establish a five-year program for improvements to federally classified roadways within the village. These roadways include I-394, Sauk Trail, Torrens, and 223rd. And then also, I assisted with the village's application to receive funding for conducting a water loss audit by attending a conference call last week. This project would be funded by the Metropolitan Planning Council through the council's drinking water one-two-three academy. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Christine.
I have a question for Jim. Jim, it's my understanding as of right now, there is no cost to us, am I right? So I just want to make that clear that we are just looking into this, and there's no cost to us right now, right other than your.
For the transportation or for the water?
I'm talking for the water academy, the water artist, the.
I'm actually less familiar with that than Chris might be.
Okay, so, okay, everyone, sure.
Yes.
Okay. So, CMAP, or, not CMAP, is CMAP, this whole, is the.
Metropolitan Planning Council.
Yeah, Metropolitan Planning Council, it's holding after this, right, you're holding it. So they're actually going to be conducting a water study, and it's free to us.
Yes, it's free to us.
Yes, it's free to us. So they're going to present to us, they should probably be here also by January seventh, something we really had to go last up. So they'll be presenting to us an MOU, some insurance agreement for them to do this, to make sure that the corporate authorities collect, and they are all for this. The question about is it free as an Ross and engineer? Now, that's, there's a consulting, the associated with providing the data later than that, that's separate, but the actual study that they're going to do, they're taking all the cost, and they provide us with expertise, and they're going to be working with our departments to facilitate this.
That's right.
Yes, and that.
Free to us, yeah.
All right, Treasury's report, Mr. Anthony Finch.
Thank you, Mayor, board, and clerk. The cash balance has a December tenth. In our corporate account, we have $226,511. The reserve is $800,000. Our special account is $70,615. The water store account is $676,46. The water store credit card account is $197,971. And our cell tower account is $302. We still have a line of credit of $500,000, for a total of available cash, $2,471,445. And our restricted funds in the CEN account, we have $42,280. The DEA account, we have $146,144. And our Sauk Village housing account is $1,418. And our tip account, $5,589,665. In the toll account, we have $13,704. In the holding money laundry account, we have $18,460. In the spending drug money account, we have $24,478. In the spending money laundry account, we have $895. In the MFT account, we got $330,790, for a total restricted funds of $1,477,245. I conclude my Treasury report.
Okay. Christine Bro.
Okay. Mr. Finch, it's my understanding that, you know, I looked at the accounts, you know, I hate to call her name, but you know, we talked about she's reviewing the bank grant facilitation, and I just wanted to go there and ask her a question, and we found out we have a lot of, at least three that I looked at, that had small amounts in there, and we've just been charged like administrative fee, this storm account. So are these the sort of things that you're talking about closing?
Yes.
Like DT, SB, K9, the drug, see, we going to accommodate?
Well, I can give you an idea of some of the accounts we're going to close.
Okay, so we going to help, because they're costing us money, you know, because it might be a little money, but you know what I mean? The.
Well, the way I changed the account, they're no longer costing us money.
Okay.
The accounts that you were referring to, in eighteen and prior, they weren't costing us money, but if you recall, a few months ago, I said I changed the type of accounts we have to where we are actually earning 1.99% on our accounts. But accounts like Cell Tower, that account would probably be closed, because it's only got $302 in it, but before I close it, I want to make sure that that money goes to the appropriate entity, and not just put in the corporate. As far as the other accounts, like the spending money laundry account, that's a restricted account that deals with the police department. That account, even though it has a small amount of money in it, it cannot be closed because it's designated to the police department.
So we, we need to know, I guess, if it's going to be in, cannot be closed, right?
Right now, it's the Cell Tower account, and then eventually, it's going to be the special account.
And let me ask you one more question, and I referred this to the village administrator. I think the name of the company is First Communication. We pay long-distance calls for them, I think, left bill was like a hundred bucks. So I talked to Shanice, well, I shouldn't say her, payroll person, and she's going to look into how to get a better deal. When I looked at it, I don't understand why we just paying for long distance, when we got AT&amp;T, Comcast, those are people that we do business with, but just to pay her, pay them $1100 for long distance doesn't make a lot of sense. But then I know the whole story to it, so, so are you ready for the money?
The first, that's the main account that we have for the village, and if it's an individual bill for just long distance, then that's something along with the AT&amp;T and other, like call one building collectively, we need to handle that.
Yeah. So anyway, those are the things I would like to put on record, so, you know, so we can find out, you know, because this is wasting money. Anyway, that's my question. Well, I.
You have a comment? Thank you, sir. Next item is reports of departments, finance, and administration. Again, interim director, Anthony Finch.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in front of you have accounts payable and payroll dispersment as of December tenth, 2018. Payroll for December sixth, 2018, $129,113.39. Accounts payable for the December tenth, $301,968.93. Earlier this week, we asked you guys to approve accounts payable for Shop With The Cop for $2,040, I mean, $2,540. So that, between the three items, that was a total of $433,622.32. That's the total dispersment as of the December tenth. In addition, I will be sending out an email later on this evening. We have received donation for the food drive, that money has been deposited, so I need to send an email out with a question, $850 to be provided for the clerk to do. So I need to send an email out with a question, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars to be provided for the clerk to do food drive. So, um, that amount will be on the next, uh, dispersment, who we need to check tomorrow. That concludes my report.
All right, um, fire department, fire chief, Stephen Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fire department responded to twenty-two calls for the period of November 22nd through December 5th. Um, there were six calls on Thanksgiving Day, which I was happy to see that our dedicated firefighters responded to without hesitation. And I personally want to thank you guys. I thanked you guys earlier this week, but I'm going to publicly thank you guys for your, your dedication, your hard work, especially over the Thanksgiving holiday. I will also like to thank, uh, the fire department for your support in my transition to fire chief. Uh, with that being said, the following changes will be effective as of January 1st, 2020. Assistant Chief Myers will remain, um, his title will not be Assistant Chief Myers, it will be, uh, Chief, Chief of Fire Prevention and Operations. Captain Sinnerwick will become Chief of Administration. Engineer Luther will become Lieutenant Luther. Firefighter Williams will become Acting Engineer Williams. We also sworn in two firefighters, uh, Cody Raymaker, who came back after a two-year absence, and Christian Roy, whose brother Jordan is also a member of our department. Members will be signing up for spring classes, uh, through Perry State. Um, there will be no cost to the village because, uh, our Captain Sinnerwick had got a grant for education. So that's the money that we'll be using for sending our guys to further, uh, further educate themselves. At this time, I would like to present a couple of certificates, if I may. Um, normally throughout, uh, this time of year, we give out, um, a firefighter of the year, probie of the year. And I also would like to present, um, Lieutenant Luther with, uh, his, uh, fire officer one certificate. The, this class is not something that's easy to do. There's a series of classes, um, that they must take. And I'm, I'm extremely proud of him and also Douglas Luther, who got it done because the state changed the, the curriculum and they had it into Ju-, uh, June 8th to get all of these tests done. Otherwise, they would have to start all over again and they was able to manage it. And so at this time, I would like to, uh, bring up, uh, Lieutenant Luther. And as, again, like I said, it would be January 1st, he would be promoted to Lieutenant Luther.
Are you coming out there? And here, sir. Thank you.
That, that is just thanking that he received his fire officer one, uh, he's certified through the state of Illinois for his fire officer one. And you can stay there, and it shows the dedication that he puts in because the firefighter of the year award was awarded, awarded to him. And it's not something that the, the chiefs would come up with, it's a group collection. And the department voted for him to become the firefighter of the year, so congratulations. And the last award goes to, uh, our probie of the year. And a probie is just somebody that, uh, has not, that's just starting and is, uh, have not been completely certified yet. And so, uh, probationary firefighter of the year is Michael Barrett. I'd like to thank Kevin and, uh, Barrett both because they make me look good on camera. And this concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next item is, uh, police department chief Malcolm White. You got some, you got some, some, uh, reward, uh, awards too?
Uh, no, sir, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, village board. But it wasn't, it wasn't eventful week, though, thank you. Uh, farm report tonight, um, uh, for the period between the last board meeting and this board meeting, uh, November 26th and, uh, December 10th, we responded to four-hundred-twenty-one, uh, calls for service. During that same time period, we also had a total of eleven arrests. The next chat with the chief date will be in January. It'll be the third, uh, Thursday of January at six o'clock here in the Rotundra, Rotunda. Uh, January 16th, the third, uh, Thursday. Uh, this past Monday, uh, December 9th, uh, the Salt Village Police Department participated in the annual Shop With The Cop event. Shop With The Cop is a national event that occurs, uh, with numerous police agencies every year. During our Shop With The Cop event, children in need are paired with volunteers from school district 168 and the police department, well, police personnel. This event gives police personnel the opportunity to interact with great school, uh, students in a mentoring setting. With the support of the Salt Village Police and Fire Association and the Enbridge Corporation, uh, we were able to, uh, give forty-eight, forty-eight children a fun-filled, meaningful day. The Enbridge Corporation, uh, gave the bulk of the money. Um, it was roughly, I think, total altogether was, uh, including what the, uh, Salt Village Police and Fire Association gave, was thirty-five, a little over thirty-five hundred dollars. So we were able to help forty-eight children, um, on that day. The, uh, trip started off, uh, with a shopping, shopping spree at Walmart in Olympia Fields. Each child received a budget to shop for presents for their loved ones. After completing the shopping spree, the children were able to enjoy a nice lunch at the senior center. The police department would also like to send a special thanks, uh, to the mayor, who was there that day that, uh, really assisted us and helped us coordinate with the children and, um, get all of the, uh, receipts. The village clerk put in quite a bit of, uh, work, um, serving the food and preparing the room and everything. I mean, they, they really laid it out for those children. Uh, I'd also like to thank the, uh, superintendent Leaks, um, and her role and efforts, uh, in that as well. Uh, it really was a, a good event and, uh, to see the, it wasn't just the smiles on the kids' faces. They really, we really did make an impact in these children's lives, so. Uh, Mr. Mayor, village board, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, next item is, uh, public, public works, director, cap, Mr. Kevin Weller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, several items since my last report. Um, staff is still working at 2228 Yates Avenue. We replaced two sticks of water main, we have one left with the fire hydrant. Um, the boil order will be lifted ahead of time right now due to some other emergencies that we'll have to redirect on and we'll be returning at a later date to complete this job. Um, the driver was put back in at this location, so at least the resident can get in on it this time. Um, staff also completed all the branch pickup from the last windstorm we had a few weeks ago. We have had some calls recently of some branches down. We're asking residents to put larger branches in the parkway and call the village hall. If it's smaller sticks and debris, please break that up and put it in your garbage. Um, staff also, a while back, uh, last reporting, about three weeks ago, we replaced two light poles, seventeen, 21711 Jeffrey and 1609 217 Place. Uh, last Monday, the 21711 Jeffrey pole was knocked down again. We never even got the light on it. Um, with the, with the workload right now, it'll be a little while to replace that pole and to complete the project. Um, several emergencies, uh, we're with the water main breaks, um, we're behind with our leave program. We've had some, uh, rain delay and we've had some winter weather. We hope to finish, um, the last section of the north side by the end of this week. So the last two days, we have a small section in the north side to complete. Um, staff had emergency during the holiday, we had six water main breaks. And during the water main break of one of the streets on 225th, we also broke a main valve, which we had to replace also. All of that has been back online, the main valve is back in place and the boiler was lifted for that location. Um, at this point right now, we've been on most of our projects, uh, staff is finalizing some of the plows that we had back from a project. We had some quotes to do some repairs on some of our older plows. Those plows were welded and brought back, um, those plows were painted and they're back in service. Uh, two of our other plow trucks, which are, uh, 2002 and a 2007, those trucks had some leaks on some of the motors. These trucks can be extended life, so we had those worked on, uh, and those back in service. Um, we have two 1990 dump trucks, which are oldest trucks. We're still waiting on quotes to come back to repair the beds, uh, for the winter season. Um, staff also started its yearly setup for Christmas, um, definitely behind a little bit on the decorations, but the Christmas tree went up and we assisted on completing the Christmas float for Santa to, for this weekend, last weekend. And the rest of the decoration should go up, uh, first thing next week. Um, another emergency, we have a lot of emergencies in town unfortunately. Due to the emergencies, we were pushed off on some other work, um, which are some leaks in town. Most of these are B-box leaks. And we do have, uh, two smaller leaks that we believe are brakes, but they're nothing that's in any emergency. The one we have that is an emergency is at 21900 Jeffrey Avenue. That is a fire hydrant that was hit in an accident. Um, looking at the location, it's going to be an interesting dig. There are, uh, a bunch of utilities, it's like a Christmas tree on the ground over there, so it's going to be a slow-going dig. But that'll be the first one, and then we'll move on to Chappelle. Uh, the next one will be on Strasburg and then 218th Place, 216th Place, Orion, and then Peterson. Um, staff has also been tasked with a job to complete, um, B-box digs, high builds. Um, we have narrowed the list down to from different, uh, situations that they're in, for there's jetting, digging, uh, can't turn, et cetera. These are all now in the digs position and these will be lined up once we complete the emergency leaks in town to be dug and completed. Staff also during the holiday, seems like everything starts at once, uh, we started firing up some of the heater units in different places. We had a failure at the village hall, the, the work was completed, um, a week ago for some, uh, control issues. We had a problem at the fire department, um, they had a belt issue on one of theirs and a overloaded circuit. The community center had a gas valve problem on one of their heaters that was replaced. The fi-, the police department had a gas valve problem on one of their units that was replaced. And public work had two, um, water department heaters that were damaged, uh, by water. One of them's been replaced and the other one is being repaired. Um, staff also, uh, completed its final, um, equipment storage for the season. Every season, we have to put our smaller equipment away, we have to winterize it, otherwise it will be harder to start the season. And the next season, um, most of the new stuff, uh, doesn't work well with old gas and it, it actually damages it. And the last item is, we have a sanitary sewer, uh, located at 223rd Place in Yates. Uh, we have a sinkhole, um, starting on the side of it. We received two quotes and we're moving forward on a repair. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, community development, director Tanya McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To, to date for the month of December, code enforcement has issued twenty-five tickets. Six reoccupancy applications have been received and eight permits were applied for. Um, I do want to talk about the Talk To Tanya event today, our inaugural Talk To Tanya was today at ten o'clock and I cannot, um, thank the people who participated enough. Um, we actually covered three, um, things in particular. One was neighborhood revitalization program. Uh, another was starting community gardens and, um, and the third thing was a farmer's market. Uh, those are things that the community development department, um, would like to focus on, um, over the course of the next three months, so, uh, first, uh, quarter of, of 2020. And, uh, we had a list of volunteers and we can always use more. So if you would like to volunteer for some of the, uh, projects that we have going on in the community development department, that would be awesome. Our next meeting is scheduled for, uh, January 14th. Again, it's a Tuesday, every second Tuesday of the month at ten o'clock. Um, we'll have the Talk To Tanya and I encourage you guys to come out and, um, and be a part of this grassroots, uh, movement towards, uh, bettering Salt Village. All right, thanks. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Reports of trustees, standing committees, and comments, Public Safety Committee, trustee Gary Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the chief for his hard work, Chief Barrett, and the rest of the firemen, David Scott. Congratulations to them all. Um, the next meeting for the safety committee will be on the twel-, uh, the 17th, the next Tuesday here, in this room at 11:00 a.m. And, uh, happy holidays, everybody, thank you.
Public Services Committee, trustee Bernice Brewer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, since we need to save this, I have any money right now for public works, uh, I just want to...
Yours, Mike.
That's trusty. Now, uh, I have a paper report dated, uh, December 6th. And one thing I want to, uh, bring to your attention is something that you're, my, is that the water products of Aurora, uh, they're building, uh, they have a bill on here for, uh, two-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-five dollars and ninety-one cents, it's more than ninety days old. Now, my, my thought is, this is just a comment, is that, since we have money in the water fund, and my mistake, it's over six-hundred thousand dollars, water products by jet, these things related to water should be paid. There's no reason why that, that we shouldn't have, uh, have outstanding bills on the paper reports related to water products of Aurora. I don't know what a bill is, but I know it's on the paper report, but we need to, if anything, if anybody needs to be paid for, for these people, you know? So that's just a comment I like to, uh, throw out there because this, uh, this is sixty-one to ninety days old and, uh, you know, we need to get those, uh, those people paid first. The other comment I want to, uh, make is that I'm looking forward to the report that K-McKenny is going to have. Uh, I know we've been pushed up to, uh, January 7th and, uh, before K-McKenny, I hope we can get some reports, you know, like the tip last, the detail last year about tips two, three, and four, so we could, uh, sort of follow along with what's been going on with the K, uh, the K for the last, uh, two years, but we really haven't got any information other than, uh, what they, uh, what they call, they, uh, did some, gave us extra money for the, uh, the, the test. But, uh, I'm just looking forward and hoping K-McKenny will be, um, ready and also that we get the information so we can be ready for them with our questions and everything that's, um, with K-McKenny. Cause we're not, we're, we're not paying them. Uh, also, on, on the, uh, accounts receivable, accounts payable for Salt, there's a, uh, and, uh, this will look at out of my, uh, report, but this has everything to do with, uh, fighting. That we're going to pay six-hundred dollars for, uh, FES. Now, this particular company, we, uh, we know that we haven't gotten good services for them, but yet, uh, the six-hundred dollars is back on the accounts payable. I don't think we should be paying for them, we should be asking them for a refund or some kind of status, what we can do. We don't need to keep constantly paying this, uh, FES, and we know we're not going to get anything and we haven't had anything from FES, uh, SOX is what they call it, that's the name that we apply to. So, uh, I also refer this to, uh, the V, uh, Williams, you know, so he could look into it, but we shouldn't be paying, that's almost eighteen hundred dollars that we got just lost and we haven't gotten good services for. So, uh, I could look into that along with first communications, uh, I've been talking about earlier. I don't, Mr. Finch is going to look into that, uh, I'm not quite sure all that, oh, this is, uh, communication, uh, like I said before, since we have people like Comcast and RAZ and all that, we should be paying first communications unless it's something special that we have to do, uh, since late, uh, I think it was seven hundred dollars that we have to pay. I don't know why we can't provide the, uh, you know, service, you know? But it might be something that, you know, that's something that Mr. Finch has to look into and, uh...
Thank you. Budget and fin- Budget and finance, uh, trustee Roger Glan- Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a question, I mean, a comment, and, uh, first about my committee. So I will have a committee meeting next Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. here in the Rotunda. And also, I just wanted to mention, and the clerk party already knows this, but, um, Bloom Township is now accepting applications for your property taxes, uh, appeal. So therefore, they'll be taking applications, uh, December 10th through, I think, January the 8th. And also, they will be hosting a, Bloom Township will be hosting a seminar on... And also, they will be hosting a, Bloom Township will be hosting a seminar on how to successfully appeal your property taxes. I think it's very beneficial. I think the clerk put something on like that for us last year, I believe. And I think that lady, or the team that came, that was very helpful for people that attended the seminar. So just want to get that out there and that's all that I have.
Thank you. Housing, I'm sorry, Housing and the Governmental Relations Committee, trustee Sherry Gesensky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Committee will meet tomorrow night here at 7:00 o'clock in the Rotunda. Is that when your town hall meeting is?
No, no, I have one tomorrow.
Okay. And also, it's at 7:00. And also, I would like to bring to the attention of the board that I've asked for several, I inquired about several items to certain staff members here on November 7th, and I still have yet got none of my answers. Maybe three of the answers were submitted, but there's several that still are not answered. I sent the whole list over to the village administrator and it's simple stuff. I think the board has the right to know. It was no questions out of the ordinary and I would really like my questions answered. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. If you do that next time, Ford, give me a, so I can file up on it. Public Events Committee, trustee Debbie Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start my report, I would just like to reiterate the fact regarding the minutes that I asked to be corrected. In no way was I expecting it to be so contentious. We get the minutes like within 48 to 72 hours of the meeting. Some of us do have other employment and other schedules that we have to meet, so unfortunately I was unable to look at those minutes until late this afternoon. I think that sometimes things need to be checked and verified before they can be voted on and nobody saw the minutes as it was stated earlier. I did not share the minutes with anybody. I simply called someone to ask if this was the way that they believed that they had made that statement. I myself will be listening to the tape and I myself, if I was wrong, I would be the first one to admit it, but I just hope that we could make revisions to minutes without having it be so contentious. The minutes from October 15th were asked to be approved on December 15th. So if we had a little bit more time, maybe we wouldn't have to be rushed to bring the suggestions to the clerk. My report tonight is, I would like to thank Tanya for her presentation of her vision for South Village. It was very enlightening conversation with a group, a great combination of staff, residents, and investors. I'm looking forward to future spirited conversation and seeing the ideas bear fruit. When asked what one word I would use to describe South Village, I said thirsty. There is so much untapped potential and such a great need in so many areas that need to be watered. I believe this is the beginning of some much-needed sparks to ignite the changes that so nor sorely need to be addressed. The December 22nd bake sale has been canceled. This is just too close to the holidays. The next Public Events Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 16th at 5:00 p.m. We will be discussing the upcoming events for 2020, including the blood drive tentatively scheduled for Saturday, January 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. A sign-up sheet will be available once the date and time have been confirmed. Also on the agenda will be the addition of an ad hoc committee, Public Relations Committee, to work as part of the Public Events Committee. The goal of this committee will be discussed at the December 16th meeting. At this time, I would like to see changes to the outdated website, reestablish the website calendar, and bring back the SOC Talk on a monthly or bimonthly basis. Everyone is encouraged to attend and either join the committee or just attend the committee and give feedback. And I wish everybody a merry and blessed Christmas in case you're not here next week. Thank you.
Reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory committee, Mr. Emmett Farmer.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Our next meeting for the senior advisory council is this Thursday, December 12th at 5:00 p.m. and all the welcome and we'll pretty much be sitting our, doing like a setup for 2020, for our events for the seniors. Also come out and join our seniors for breakfast bingo every second and fourth Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Also seniors, don't forget game night every first and third Friday, tomfo4 card games such as BitWiz and other games from 6:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m. As the seniors, and also committee members will be kicking BitWiz from 6:00 until 7:00 every first and third Fridays for those who do not know how to play. And also the senior advisory council would like to thank our seniors for a great year. And we look forward to serving you all again in 2020. That concludes all for, thank you.
Mr. Farmer, did you say that they're going to be BitWiz classes?
Yes, we're going to do BitWiz.
I didn't, I didn't go in there. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Yeah, between the first hour.
Okay.
For those, because you know, we get a lot of people that say they don't come because they don't know how to play. So we're going to do classes and start helping people learn how to play so they can participate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, I'll accept the motion to approve payroll to accounts payable for the amount of $433,622.32.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring a motion to pay payroll and accounts payable with the exception of FES and also Studley Group to be voted on separately.
F, you call it FES?
Yes.
You mean SOCS?
No, no, FES on the accounts payable.
Okay, but that's still SOCS. Reason why I'm asking, we have a contract, so what do you want to break it? Because there's a contract for that. I'm just asking, I'm just asking, I'm just bringing it to your attention, that's a contract. And I think that's the last payment of that contract, so.
I'm aware of that, I just want to be voting on separately. Those two items, that.
You want to take it out of the, take it off, I was paying, correct?
I want to take it off, I said I want to be voting on separately.
So you want to take it off of the accounts payable right now, voted on separately? That's what you're saying? That's what you're asking for? Is there a second to that?
Second.
It was moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Williams, that the accounts payable will be ratified or voted on, I'm sorry, be voted on minus the SOCS, S-O-C-S. I don't know how FES got there, but it's really S-O-C-S. And also the Studley Group bill. Heard the motion, are there any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay, the motion is carried. I'll accept the motion for SOCS to be paid.
So.
Second.
Moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Williams, any questions?
I just want to make a comment on FES and SOCS, just that I understand that we have a contract, we could get a contract, get a copy of it. And also to keep paying this, I understand that this is the last payment for them, but to keep paying them when we're not getting any goods and services for them, I think it gives, you know, a regular service to people in South Village. We should talk to FES and SOCS and try to get some credit or see what we could do, what they could do for us. We have paid them $1,800 and I understand they didn't do too much or anything. So I just want to put it out there and so get the vote on it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Any other question?
No, I understand that, again, I understand your concern trustee Brewer, that we are paying for a service that we've never been able to use. So that I, I did speak to the village administrator about this and what it is, is they have taken up our hosting of our website. So they are getting paid. It's our fault that we didn't give them information to improve the website. So since we are under contract and the reason I agreed to table this and bring it back to this part of this is for open discussion. We are under contract, but I think it's the villagers' responsibility that they didn't follow through on their end, so I feel that they do need to get paid. And I don't think that we warranted a credit because we didn't follow through, but I appreciate you bringing up the subject.
Any other question? Motion's on the floor to pay SOCS. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Yes.
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 Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to pay the Studley Group for that invoice. I think it was dated in, pardon me, August, is that it? Okay, August 13th. That's when, that's when the invoice was submitted, but it was for June, I think it's June, I think it said right here, invoice June. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the payment of the Studley Group.
So.
It was moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Grant, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, with regard to the Studley Group, I'm not quite sure. I couldn't get the date. As I understand, the Studley Group, the last was supposed to be taken off the Studley Group. So I understand that everybody's deals are already gone. So now, I don't know if this is final bill, or what is this $1,200 bucks for? I couldn't get any information. I don't know if this is final bill and it seems like to me this is for, oh, I don't know why this bill is still laying around. I told them this is not coming back. To me, it should have been paid and I thought we had paid it, but the question is, is this a final bill or do we have something else that's on with the Studley Group? I couldn't get the answer to that, so.
Did you get a copy of the bill?
I, I got a copy of the bill.
What was the date on it?
The, the date on it was like October.
Well, it couldn't have been October. It says here invoice dated August 13th, but.
It should have been paid by now.
But it says in June right here, so that's why I'm asking you, did you get a copy of the invoice itself? Okay.
It was taken off?
Right, it was, it was presented and it was tabled, voted, no, it was tabled to a later time, or said no, one or the other. So we'll bring it back at a later point in time.
Any other questions in regards to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I came in today to review the invoices and I was unable to get the invoices, but I understand again trustee Brewer's concern. The Studley Group was never approved by the board to represent the village. My question is, is this the final invoice? I also share your concern, but since nobody was here today to discuss that, I would, I personally will go ahead and approve it and take it up with the finance department at another time.
Okay, because I'm looking at, the Studley Group was approved back in April, I think it was March and April to be interim. Then it came after, in May, that there was a communication gap between Olson and Stirk who was supposed to bring someone else in, because they cannot act as adjudicator, and the Studley Groups who was already there. So that's why the last bill arrived, because at that particular time, there was nobody to fill that particular gap and it wasn't told in time to have Studley, I'm sorry, to have Olson and Stirk law firm to bring someone else in, which they do now have somebody to take care of that. So that's how that happened. But I think this, I'm not sure if this is the final, that's why I was asking you, which one of these invoices, because it has an invoice number on it. I'm not sure which one it is, but I do know there was two invoices and I don't know if this was the latter or is it one and two or is it two and three? I'm not sure. But to answer, this is the last one? I'll tell you the truth, I'm not sure because I do know that there were two, so that's all I can say. I was asking that you actually see the invoice, because the invoice will let you know. The date on the invoice would tell you what it was.
Well, the invoice I saw had a date on it, but it didn't say it was final or whatever. And I understand the last group was taking, you know, was doing the education and that too, but it's only, only the.
No, one of them does prosecution, one of them does prosecution, one does.
This is on the old accounts payable. So my question is, I'm not sure if this is a current bill and it's still being paid or this is a final. So I wasn't quite sure, that's why I asked would be separate and there was nobody there to ask the question that I needed to know. So was this really the question for us to be paying the accounts, that kind of money that I didn't know before? So that's, that's why I asked the vote on separately.
Okay. Is that it? Because you see on here that there is, well, you passed that already. There's a motion on the floor, second, madam clerk, please call the row, for the pass, for the payment of this.
Yes.
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 Motion. Motion is carried. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a question and make a comment? It has to do with accounts payable, not this one, but prior. I don't know when to ask.
Prior accounts payable, can it, is it something that can be discussed with the people that are doing the accounts payable? I guess it would be the village administrator.
Well, it was one of the questions that I got answered on from the finance director.
And I just want to say that would probably be best, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to answer that one. That would be best answered by the finance director or village.
But I would like my comment known to the public of an incident.
Oh, you say you want to put something on the records? Yeah, that would be. No, you can't do that. You do that at the beginning of the meeting, you can't do it while the meeting is on. You can't suspend the rules after the meeting started.
Okay, well, I'll do, I'll do it next, in a couple weeks, that's fine.
Okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
I just have a question and I.
Because I mean, I don't understand what you're saying, I know, I know what you're going to say, but it still wouldn't, you wouldn't have anybody to answer that, you know, then I guess I was hoping that you would have brought up doing that particular time. Next time, you can bring it up doing that person for it.
All right.
That would be the best time.
Okay, that's right. Thank you for that answer.
Yes, you did. You did and that's when you took things out. With those items taken out that were voted on separately. So you, you did make a motion, I'm sorry, there was a motion made to pay accounts payable with those two items taken out and they voted on separately. I remember that one. Item B, motion to approve orders for the establishment of enterprise zones subject to the Enterprise Zone Act for the state of Illinois. That was the designation that we had to go through for the enterprise zone, it was discussed a few times and now it has to be voted on so we can send the proper paperwork and get it in ASAP.
So.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Williams, madam clerk.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer? Yes. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion is carried. All right, the next one is the recommendation to approve the following consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of, number one, motion to approve orders for the levy and the assessment of the taxes for the year 2019, 2020 fiscal year for the village of South Village, Cook County, County of Cook of Illinois. And the second consent agenda item is to approve a resolution to request an application for zero loss and cost factor to the 2019 tax levies for the village of South Village of Cook County. We discussed these last week and we thought it would be best that they would put in because one helps out the other one. Move by trustee Williams, second by trustee Bell. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Zentzky?
Yes.
Trustee Todd? Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Fair?
Yes.
Motion is carried. As was stated before, and we did have a few things on the agenda, but there will not be another committee meeting next week. I didn't think it would make sense, because we can't vote on it the following week, because the following week is Christmas Eve, we're not going to have a meeting. So to have our first meeting of the year, which will be January 7th, I thought we would push the next meeting, the corporate authorities, to the 7th, to discuss what we may have on the agenda for our committee meeting. So I would, I'm asking the board that we will not have a meeting, any more meetings this year until the beginning of January, which will be January 7th, 2020, at our regular committee meeting. Just wanted to make that announcement. Unless there's an emergency, quite naturally, if there's an emergency, we will have to have an emergency meeting. But at this time, I wanted to say, for those that are still here, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Be safe, be careful, be cognizant. I know it's cold outside, but do not, I know the chief, I don't know if he said anything, but do not leave the house, and I'll say this again, do not leave your house with a electric heater plugged in and working. If you're going to be gone, turn it off. Do not leave that there. A lot of those fires start because those cords get hot. Even though it's not an extension cord, they get hot. So do not leave the house. If you have an electric heater, unplug it or turn it off to make sure that it's off if you have to leave the house. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It was moved by several people, trustee Bell, trustee Jazinski, and trustee Brewer, and second by trustee Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much.